Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2020 work session of the, or I should say, joint work session, Mayor Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one discussion item, but it's a big one. We're going to talk about the, we're going to review the Lake Forest Master Plan Engagement Effort Results and start to talk about next steps. And so I'm going to turn it over to John Schlichting to introduce the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. Packet page three, please. I am John Schlichting, your Director of Planning and Code Administration, and I will be kicking off this evening's discussion of the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan Amendment. There is a significant amount of material to cover this evening, and I want to commend all of our staff involved in preparing for tonight, especially our long-range planning staff, Rob Robinson, Kirk Eby, and Laura Mafoud, with a ton of support from Tom Lonergan, Sharon Disk, and of course, Tanisha and Dennis. Packet page four, please. I know you're all familiar, oh, go back to four, please. Yes, I know you are all familiar with this area. This is the mall as it exists today. The green line is the city boundary. The black dots represent access points into the property, red stoplights at the signal light intersections, and the yellow circle is the location of the existing transit center. Packet page five, please. Staff began this master plan amendment process in August at the direction of Mayor and Council. It is not the intent of this process to design a plan for the property, but rather establish a framework for future redevelopment with a narrative-based plan. It is also not the intent of this master plan amendment to be prescriptive, but rather to establish an overall vision that includes elements, strategies, and goals for the property. It should be the vision of this Mayor and Council and Planning Commission, heavily informed and advised by the extensive public engagement process that took place in October and November. So tonight, we will be asking for a lot of feedback and guidance, but we're not writing the amendment tonight. Our goal tonight is to make sure we're addressing your priorities and reflecting your vision as we set forth to write a draft amendment over the next few months, which will come back to you in March. Packet page six, please. Once again, I need to commend our staff for executing the most extensive public engagement strategy to anyone's knowledge in this city, and all done virtually during a pandemic. Staff began by reviewing existing studies, including, and most importantly, the recent visioning exercise, collating the existing data, and publishing it on a new, unique public or project page. Two surveys were designed and promoted, a comprehensive online survey with 19 questions, and a brief three-question survey, which was mailed to all residences and businesses within a half a mile of the mall. Targeted, specific stakeholder-focused groups and public forums were planned to maximize opportunities for a wide range of personal public input. Packet page seven, please. The response was unprecedented, with nearly 3,500 responses to the online survey. From over 8,000 mailed surveys, we got back over 10%. We hosted 14 of the focus group meetings, covering the bases from middle school students to seniors, city committee members to nonprofit groups, and six public forums involving 28 members of the general public. All of these meetings were up to 90 minutes long. With that, I'm going to hand over the reins to Laura Mafoud, who will start giving you a deeper dive into the results of the good work done so far.
Thank you, John. If you can go to the next slide, please. So next staff wanted to briefly go over some highlights of the data from various research studies that were used to help inform the recommendations that will be presented later this evening. The City of Gaithersburg Visioning Data Analysis, completed in 2019, provided a lot of good insight into future growth of the city. The city is projected to add approximately 20,000 new residents by 2045, and will need between 6,700 and 9,700 more housing units to meet that demand. The city is also projected to add about 20,000 new jobs by 2045, mostly in the professional, scientific, and technical and healthcare fields. The city is expected to see the weakest job growth in retail. So given this projected growth, one of the key conclusions from the visioning report is the limited land available for new development or redevelopment in the city. So these residential and commercial or employment uses will be competing for the same space. Because of this limited land availability, higher-density mixed-use development will best be able to accommodate some of this projected growth. So we know we can't accommodate all of the needs from this report on the Lake Forest Mall site, but we think we can start to address some of them. Next page, please. The study also concluded that multifamily housing, as opposed to single-family, can best meet the needs of growing populations, again, due in part to limited land availability. It also concluded that larger units with more bedrooms will be needed because we've seen higher growth in family households and an increase in average household size. A Montgomery County Retail Trends Study, done in 2017, concluded that retail in Gaithersburg is and will remain oversupplied into 2025 in all categories except neighborhood goods and services. It also concluded that GFO, or general merchandise apparel furnishings and other goods, needs to contract by just over a million square feet in order to balance supply and demand. And just to description, neighborhood goods and services are smaller things like drugstores, pharmacies, barber shops. And then GFO are the larger department stores and stores that sell things like furniture and clothing. And then lastly, with transit, the Lake Forest Mall Transit Center currently serves seven ride-on routes. It connects up county and down county. The Lake Forest Transit Center feasibility study, completed in 2015, projected daily boardings to increase from approximately 3,500 to almost 4,900 in 2040. And that does not include the impact of the BRT. Next page, please. So this is just an illustration, again, to give you an idea of what GFO is, these larger stores, sporting goods, clothing stores, things like that. And this is the retail category that we are currently oversupplied in. So I can pause here if there are any questions, or we can keep going.
Quick question, Laura?
Sure.
Thank you. Looking good so far. So if all of the retail space is, well, I guess, how much of the retail space in Lake Forest, in the mall itself, accounts for the GFO?
So Lake Forest Mall, I think at the time of the study, had 900,000 square feet of GFO at the time. Sharon or Tom from Economic Development might be able to give her a better update on what it is currently.
We don't know the actual occupancy right now. It was hovering at about 70% occupancy, and uses had included professional services, personal services, as well as GFO. So the mix had been changing a bit, just to reflect the lack of demand for GFO space.
But if we reduce, you know, if the target is to reduce about a million square feet, that's almost accomplished by the reduction of, the elimination of retail in the mall now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there's no other questions, I can hand it back over, I'll hand it over to Kirk Eby.
Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the next part of the presentation, which is the area that surrounds Lake Forest Mall, specifically the area within a half-mile of the mall. And the reason that a half-mile was chosen is that is approximately a 10-minute walk, which means that it's basically the area that's within the walking distance of the mall. And as you can see from the map on the page here, it does stretch from about the Historic District north to Lake Whetstone in Montgomery Village, and from about the I-270 interchange with Maryland 124 east to the Hidden Creek community. Next page, please. So within a half-mile of Lake Forest Mall, there's almost 6,900 dwelling units, and a little more than half of those are apartments. A little less than a fourth of those are condos, and a little less than a fourth of those are single-family, which would be detached houses and townhouses. Out of all the dwelling units that are within a half-mile, only 1.4% of those are what we've called the so-called "missing middle", which would be something that's in between the apartments and the single-family type units. And the ones that are there, actually, within a half-mile are two-over-two stacked condos. There are about 16% of the units that are age-restricted, and about 4% of the units are income-restricted. And Asbury makes up about 14% of those units that are within a half-mile. Next slide. So also, within a half-mile of Lake Forest Mall, there's just over 1.6 million square feet of office and medical office, and 1.4 million square feet of retail and restaurants. And those figures do not include Lake Forest Mall. As was mentioned earlier, Lake Forest Mall is about 1.1 million square feet total. And that's, of course, if it's, if it was completely occupied, which obviously currently does not. And also, within the office number, the Leidos Building, the existing Leidos Office Building, is included in that, and that's just over 520,000 square feet. Also, within a half-mile, there are some public uses. There's the Gaithersburg Regional Library, the Gaithersburg Washington Grove Volunteer Fire Department, also known as Station Eight, the South Lake Elementary School. And there's also a county-run daycare that's on the corner of Lost Knife and Maryland 124. Next slide. So within a half-mile of Lake Forest Mall, when you look at that area, looking at the block, census block groups, and compare that to the city as a whole, you would find that there are fewer white, Asian, and multiracial persons, and yet more African-American and Hispanic persons within that area. There are more renter households and fewer owner households, more single householders who live alone, fewer families with children, more people who walk or take transit to get to work, fewer people that drive alone to work, and fewer people that work at home. And there are also fewer vehicles for each renter household and for each owner household. So the takeaway really is that there are fewer families with children and more of those single householders living alone. And that is probably at least partly influenced by the Asbury Methodist Village, which is, of course, within that half-mile area. Next slide, please. And again, within a half-mile of Lake Forest Mall compared to the city as a whole, there are more persons, households, and families that are below poverty. There's a lower average median household income and a lower average median gross rent. And staff notes that even though there is a lower average median gross rent within a half-mile, only about 8% of the rental apartments that are within a half-mile are income-restricted. So the rest of that, the rest of the apartments there are just basically priced lower by the market, and that's kind of what's driving that, that lower average median gross rent in the area. There's also fewer low and moderate-income household, or there's, I'm sorry, there's more low and moderate-income households, and there's a lower average median value of the owner-occupied units. And there are more renters who spend more than half of their income on housing, but yet fewer owners who spend over half of their income on housing. And I believe that is the end of my section, so if you have some questions, I will pause here and take some questions.
So Kirk, you said there's 1.4 million-plus square feet of retail within half a mile, not counting the retail that's in Lake Forest Mall?
That's correct.
That's a much bigger number than I would have expected to hear.
And yes, and a lot of that is actually other shopping centers. So there's the Gaithersburg Square, which is within a half-mile, Gaithers Town Plaza, which is within a half-mile. And then, of course, right across from the mall, you've also got the Montgomery Village Plaza and the Off Price Center. There's also Costco and Sam's Club there within a half-mile. So, and the car dealers, I believe we count those as retail also, and there's a couple of car dealers that are within a half-mile. So there's, and there's also a couple, you know, some other smaller buildings and things like that. You know, where the, the Megamart, where that is with the 7-Eleven, that's another one. There's a lot of restaurants along 355 as well, that would, that would be included in that retail and restaurant number as well.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, okay.
One other question. So in terms of single-family homes, the only place where they're single-family detached would be Hidden Creek and the Historic District? Is that correct?
That is correct. Those are the two areas.
Okay. And do you know how many households that is, or homes, in those two areas?
I do not have that off the top of my head right here, but I know in Hidden Creek, there's only, I believe, 16 detached houses for the whole neighborhood. So the majority of those detached houses are actually in the Historic District. On average, in the city, there's about two and a half people per household. And usually, you know, there's one household per dwelling unit. There is a little bit of a vacancy. The vacancy rates for the detached houses is actually very low. So it's probably, you know, 99 out of 100 houses that are actually occupied, that are, that are, so you'd have 99 out of 100, you'd have 99 households per 100 housing units, basically.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. And if there are no other questions, I will pass it on to Rob Robinson for the next portion of the, of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. And Councilmember Sezma, just to let you know, within the packet with the fact sheets, there are 116 single-family detached units within a half-mile.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Okay, so next slide, please. So good evening, everyone. So now Laura, Kirk, and John have sort of laid the background of where we've gone. The rest of the presentation is really going to talk about the various facets of the potential master plan. And they're all going to be structured the same. We're going to begin with a discussion of what the majority consensus was of all the various engagement outreaches. So these are themes that, you know, across the various surveys and public forums and focus groups, that were sort of agreed upon. We're then going to go into staff recommendations, and then followed up with seeking some guidance on each of these sections. So the first one, as with any master plan, is to begin with the vision and the overall framework for the master plan. And as is shown on the slides, much as you would expect, the majority consensus, you know, thought mixed use is important, as we do in many, the city with many of our developments. However, one thing we noted that was much more different than some of the other ones, for, for the majority, mixed use means more than just retail and residential at this stage. Everybody, you know, the majority consensus was that redevelopment should include a coordinated, well-integrated mix of uses. And as much as we've seen with Crown and Kentlands, people really felt a unique sense of place that would draw people to Lake Forest Mall as an important aspect. Another thing that we heard that was sort of new, that we haven't necessarily heard with other developments, is connectivity with the surrounding area is extremely important. Next slide, please. And building off that, walkability, and with this connectivity, it's the inclusion of recreational, open, and green spaces, you know, is a real priority, which we have, haven't always heard with other developments. And we think, you know, that may be a function of what we're going through now. There should be a focus on job creation, and there should be a variety of jobs that offer new opportunities and upward mobility. And maybe most importantly, and maybe reflective of the times that we're in, people were of the consensus that there should be flexibility built into this master plan to account for unforeseen challenges. And this sort of goes back to what John mentioned, where the goal of this master plan isn't to do a prescriptive, block-by-block plan, but, but sort of establish more of a narrative and a guide. Next slide, please. So that being said, staff recommends for the master plan, for the vision section, that, you know, a redeveloped Lake Forest Mall should create a unique and strong sense of place, that it should ensure stability, resiliency, and desirability over time. Internal and external connectivity to accommodate a variety of transportation options in a safe manner, replace the existing surface parking lots with denser, more intensive uses that create economic activity and generate jobs for various career levels and support housing needs. And include an interconnected network of community spaces, which we'll get to in the next section, talking about amenities, with open and green, that, that offer a lot of different things, such as social gathering, or experiential, or recreation, or just passive. Next slide, please. So as to the mix of uses, as, you know, discussed with the majority consensus, we think Lake Forest is the right place to go beyond the typical retail and residential types. You know, let's, let's really explore maker spaces and integrated light manufacturing, R&amp;D in community and civic uses. And I, and I think an important thing to note in our discussions with what we envision is that mixed use can be achieved at the project scale with horizontal development, rather than, you know, in some ways, we were, where every building had to have a mix of uses. We don't want to discourage a mix of uses in a building, but, you know, let's look at this, because when John, going back to the original map, the center inside, you know, Russell Avenue, going all the way down, is over 80 acres. So there's a lot of opportunities here. And we believe, you know, to include new and unique housing types that foster a variety of rental and ownership opportunities at various price points. And we do agree that we should include flexibility in the plan to allow social technological, economic, and unforeseen changes, while still staying true to the overall master plan vision. Next page, please. So with that, really, this evening, what staff is seeking from the Planning Commission and the Council is, is there support for the framework expressed by the stakeholders and staff? And have we missed any elements that these two bodies believe should be included in the framework for the master plan?
If we could come out of the share screen, that I can see everybody, and I can, it's easier for me to run the meeting. So I want to, I'll, I'll start us off by saying, I think that these, this, this feedback that we've started with, this consensus recommendation that's come from this public process, is extremely helpful. And I think it's, I think it's all on the right track from what I, from what I've seen so far. So I'm going to put it out there for council members or planning commissioners. Just raise your hand if you want to weigh in here. Okay, we'll go with Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I think, as Judge just said, you know, what we received from the public here and the immense engagement that we received and is articulated in the packet, you know, i- in my mind, reinforces the direction that, that I think this area should go. And I think we, as a collective body, have been articulating. I do agree generally with the, the vision level bullets that were just articulated. One thing that I would add to that is, you know, the thought that Lake Forest Mall and its 80 acres of development, while within that property is very important, it also, I think, serves as kind of the key to the entire area. And so, you know, you, you talk about, for example, across Lost Knife, you've got the HSC properties, and you've got development that is slated within the Montgomery Village Master Plan. You've got areas such as, you know, the Holiday Inn Building across the street, and everything, basically, that comes along 355, where decisions that we make here at Lake Forest Mall, as far as the direction that it could take, or allowably take, and the developers develop it in that fashion, is going to, I think, have a far-ranging impacts. And so I would urge, maybe at a bullet level, like one of the overarching vision statements is, is thinking about this as a holistic project with the surrounding properties. So talking about connectivity, talking about a larger vision for the entire area, rather than just to the 80 acres. And I think some of the folks that were answering the survey also were thinking that as well. So that would be my one comment, is, is I think at the top level, also emphasizing this kind of broader vision for the entire area with, with Lake Forest kind of being that central linchpin to, to realizing the potential.
Thanks, Rob. Mike, did I see your hand go up?
Yes. Yeah, you know, I think Rob makes a good point. Everything that happens here is going to influence the immediately adjacent properties, as well as the 355 corridor. So we certainly need to keep that in mind. I think one of the things to consider, and one of the things we, we need to remember now about Lake Forest Mall is the community amenity in terms of a space for public events. The central core of the mall and the floor space there used for, you know, a lot of different organizations' meeting, art exhibits, things like that. You know, some of those uses have, have decreased in recent years, but I still think, you know, we've had the Lunar New Year celebration every year. We started doing our own diversity aspects. And so in terms of those kinds of amenities, I think that, that's an important aspect that we need to think about maintaining in whatever happens here. I think this is an ideal location for it, certainly, people are used to it. So, but in general, I think that fits in with the scope of the activities and features we've been talking about in terms of mixed use as well. So that was just one thing, I, I think that, that perhaps some folks recognized in part, but not to the extent that, that I think the importance of, you know, over the decades that the mall has been there, this has been that role in terms of within the community and how that space is used by the community. With, certainly with a cooperation and encouragement of the, the five owners, that's been an important part of the community. So we certainly want to, I, I would say that's, that's got to be part of the vision. Whatever happens here is how do we create the same sense of place that, that the mall provided for some of those things? So, but other, other than that, I think Rob hit the same points that I would have hit in terms of how the, what, what we decide here, or what we envision here is going to influence every, every, every other area adjacent and in the corridor. So, and then certainly also influence what happens in Montgomery Village.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions? John Bauer, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had four, sort of four basic points I wanted to make or questions. The first about the, the concept of destination, or the site is, or the place is a destination. I liked where that was headed. And I think what we need to do is be a little bit more clear, I don't want to say specific, but more clear, or more, a struck lustrous about what, what kind of a destination is it? Is it something that is really attractive to the folks within that half-mile, to within five miles, to within the region? What, what does that really mean? Because I think that would have, that would play a big part in shaping the sorts of things we're really looking to do with the sort of specific things that will end up being there. So the idea of wrapping a little bit more scale around what destination means, I think, would be helpful. The second thing is the use of mixed use. And one of the fears I'm beginning to feel now, more than I did 20 years ago, was the use, the term "mixed use" has a fairly well-understood, I believe, anyway, a fairly well-understood example within the city, and it's not a bad thing. But I wonder if, in, in breaking away from that, it might be appropriate for this project. And while mixed use is the right concept, maybe what we begin to do is really explore a different way to talk about a mixed use that's not just residential and commercial, but has a broader quality to it. And maybe something that's a more forward-looking than what the longstanding precedent for mixed use is in the city. I think that might be part of helping to establish a framework that is more, more broad, or more, more forward, forward-looking. The third point, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Wu was talking about in terms of this being a real linchpin to further development, this just general area. I would, I would suggest, maybe even it's a catalyst for some of that to happen, that once this, once this rolls, it, other things may begin to happen. And with that potentially as the, as the, one of, one of the outcomes of this project is to maybe think more aspirational about what, what this project could be or could do, that it not only has a role to fulfill some of the visions of the, of the folks that participated in this, but also carries maybe a bigger, a bigger role to be that catalyst. And decisions we make about what that language looks like could, could really help to either make it that, or make it a more internally-focused project. could, could really help to either make it that or make it a more internally focused project. And then the fourth thing I think where council member Sesma was headed on, on his point about the use of the mall space over the years. Later on in the presentation, there is a whole section about amenities and what that looks like. And I think in my mind, amenities very often is a secondary thing to a bigger thing. So you would talk about, you know, here, here's our, here's our hotel and here are the amenities or here's our, here's our, our, our mixed use development. Here are some of the amenities. Where I think some of these things really probably ought to go to the top of the list in terms of primary use, whether they're, when you talk about them as event spaces or you know, what a community spaces, whatever they might be. Regardless of how big they are, I think in terms of what they get in terms of the, the, the highlight and the dark color and the big red star on the, on the site plan, they may end up being as important as the, the maybe much larger gross square footage that gets devoted to something else. But something we want to really communicate in this, in this, this plan. So those are my four kind of observations that might have. Staff may already have that figured out and have an answer for it. So, so put a question mark at the end of each of those, I guess, is, is one way to look at that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Questions, comments? Lori, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you again, staff, for the very thorough presentation and the extensive engagement that went into the recommendations. In responding to your question about the location of the transit center, I wanted to recommend, I've mentioned this previously about moving the transit center, relocating it to Summit Avenue. I say that because I'm thinking of the traffic that we have and all the development that's going to be happening along this corridor. We mentioned the Holiday Inn, but we also have the Spectrum property that is developing and further development up that way. And so this is also not just connectivity to the Old Town of the city and also the West Biotech Corridor. And so thinking about transporting all of these pedestrians and commuters and consumers around this space, I think it, an idea I had was moving the transit center and putting our retail along that corridor so that it is easily accessible to the Old Town. When I'm thinking about the Asbury Methodist Village and all the traffic that will come from, you know, integrating this into a lot of opportunities for green space and integration into the neighboring communities. I'm thinking of a pedestrian bridge because of our seniors and thinking that they need safe passage across the arteries along this feeding into the area. I'm also thinking of this area as an arts and entertainment district. We're, we're talking about making this a very unique space and so many things that we can do, whether it's creating a place for the seniors, the families across the street in cider mill or the families that are in Hitting Creek, the families that are in Old Town. And so making sure that this is a venue that everyone can benefit from. And the types of jobs that we're thinking about, we know that the workforce is definitely changing and thinking about more opportunities for green jobs and how we can really make this place a sustainable and not just thinking about connectivity, but definitely compatibility and very unique sense of place. We don't have a lot of redevelopable land in the city. And so this is definitely of interest to a lot of residents and making sure that it's compatible with surrounding development that's coming is going to be important. And so that's all I had to contribute at this time, but.
Thanks, thanks, Lori. And I just want to remind everybody, we're, there's a number of other sections we're going through in this presentation. This was, we're just at the vision part now. So there, so there will be other opportunities to comment on specifics on, on housing and, and the transit center and, and, and other aspects of this coming up. Lloyd, I saw your hand go up. Go right ahead.
There we go. I just want to comment on two things. One is the projection of 20,000 new jobs coming into the area over the next maybe 20, 25 years. And from the presentation, it was stated that these new jobs would be professional, technological, higher end type jobs. And yet we have an area that's socioeconomically deprived right now around mall. And I'd like to see an integration, if you will, of the housing that would allow the socioeconomic disparities to become more equal, if you will. In other words, integration more of the community and allowing for the housing that would bring in those kinds of jobs and those kinds of incomes that would help raise up the area from where it is currently. And some of that would be the attractions, of course, and the other amenities we talked about. But I'm, I'm really concerned about the limited resources as Commissioner, as I'm sorry, Councilmember Sales said that we have limited resources for the land. And this is a very unique opportunity to help integrate in the housing of and projecting the new jobs that will be coming into the city over the next 20 years. And we shouldn't just limit ourselves to the next three to five years. We should look out further down the road.
Well, that's a good segue into continuing the, the presentation because we are going to get into phasing later in the presentation. So I don't see any other hands at the moment. I'm going to turn it back over to Rob to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we left off on page 21. So there was a lot of good comments there and, and building off of something Chair Bauer said. The next section we want to talk about is amenities. Staff was very surprised. Um, a, a fundamental change that we've heard in public outreach, typically when you start talking about developments, people talk about the kind of stores they want or where the houses. Virtually across the board, the importance of amenities, which may be a function of the times that we're in, but be it multifamily or remote working, people really value now on these other things. And, and to council member Sales comments about unique sense of place and even a council member Sesma's talking about the civic uses that all falls in. We heard this time and again from each group. Maybe not in lockstep about they want, but the majority consensus was the inclusion of high quality, functional enticing amenities is a priority for redevelopment. It, it's not in response to something else. It is at, at the forefront. Physical amenities should be varied, such as gathering spaces, natural areas, trails and bike paths, programmed and unprogrammed, open and green spaces and recreation. Amenity use types should include civic, entertainment, experiential and recreational activities. We met so many groups that we spoke to, while they didn't know the word, once we said, do you mean experiential? Everybody in, in unison was like, yes, that's what we're looking for, something more. We heard time and again, I can order shoes on Amazon. I, I can't do something unique with my family. Amenities, the other thing that we heard is amenities should appeal, and this is building off Commissioner Coffin, should appeal to a variety of ages and household types. Um, it shouldn't just be, you know, targeted to one demographic. Next slide, please. So given that we want to make sure the master plan addresses the importance of amenities and the need to incorporate them as part of the redevelopment, that the amenities should be designed to, uh, uh, address greater social and community needs. And this is building off what council member Sesma was saying. And should contribute to and support tax generating uses and should be diverse in their application. We don't want to go back to sometimes what we've seen where it's just a collection of, you know, small pocket parks that are overly landscaped and half used for stormwater management. But speaking of stormwater management, one of the things that, that we want to recommend that we heard time and again is that the existing stormwater management ponds should be enhanced and incorporated into a greater open and green space network design that includes both programmed and, and unprogrammed. It shouldn't be sequestered off to the corner and serve its purpose. It should be brought into the greater development, but not be the sole green space or amenity for that development. Next slide, please. So what I'm talking about, opening green spaces can take a variety of forms and functions. As in the top left, if you're looking at the screen, it can be hardscape. It can be trails and paths. It can be ni- natural areas. Or it can be stuff that's actually programmed. So um, when we talk about these things, again, while we're not going in the master plan to say, you must have a pavilion here. We do want to encourage the diversity in types that it can serve multiple purposes to multiple people. Next slide, please. And building off to council member Sesma, um, it doesn't always have to be outside either. It can include indoor features or uses that include this experiential or entertainment or retail and restaurants. But because of all that, what the master plan is going to have to recommend is that there's an enhanced pedestrian realm throughout any redevelopment. Um, and the enhanced pedestrian realm can actually serve as an additional amenity. One thing we've seen in this time with lockdown and social distancing, um, you know, outdoor, suddenly outdoor seating for restaurants, curbside pickup, or just being able to walk your dog comfortably, but say hello to a neighbor while still maintaining that six feet of distance. Um, civic uses should be encouraged and not immediately discounted. But right now for the master plan, where we're leaning is not to specify a specific land area set aside for an undefined use or uses. And, and we're also not necessarily, you know, from the staff perspective, going to engage which civic use is the best use. Um, but any civic use that comes in should enhance the greater development and contribute to the overall vision that we just talked about. Um, and we believe that in the master plan, we can discuss that major civic uses should explore opportunities and partnerships to address funding and operational challenges and seek to integrate other, with other uses in a mixed use horizontal or vertical development as opposed to being a standalone building. Next slide, please. So what am I talking about when I'm talking about civic uses? They don't necessarily mean publicly owned and operated. It's, it's places that serve a, a social need for the community and bring people together. That's really what we mean. And they can include everything from a performing arts center. For those who know, this is the Hippodrome in Baltimore. Next slide, please. To a sports arena complex. And we know in Virginia, you know, there's ice rinks. We see stuff that has indoor batting cages. Or there can be, you know, actual, you know, somewhat arenas. Next slide, please. And it can go all the way to a privately operated community multi-use center. This is in Vancouver, British Columbia. And it was interesting, looking in here, they have a banquet hall and they do everything from job training to yoga studios. And it's all privately operated. It is not a, a public function. Next slide, please. So with that, the real questions that we want to ask the commission and the council is, um, should there be a discussion, you know, of these type of civic facilities broadly? Um, are, do, are there thoughts about a specific aspect to it? Um, are there other amenities, you know, outside of the open programmed, unprogrammed and, and these, these civic uses? Are there other amenities not included that we should, you know, be putting into the master plan? And a lot of our conversation is, you know, entertainment and park uses. But I think council member Sesma brought it up, you know, should there be an additional discussion including the social support uses? We heard not majority consensus, but from another group, um, the importance of job training centers or incubators or things that serve, you know, social, social safety net uses in, in a centralized building that again, doesn't necessarily have to be government owned and operated. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to the floor, please.
Thank you, Rob. Um, so I, first off, I, I think that amenities are particularly important in, as part of this project. You know, I don't know whether it's best to, how specific we need to get about whether it's a civic facility or whether it's uh, uh, some other, you know, some other specific type of amenity. But I think one of the things I've been saying for 12 years is that City of Gaithersburg, because of its nature, where we have the, you know, this archipelago is, is a, I've, I've sort of appropriated Neil's archipelago metaphor uh, around this, this central giant federal facility of NIST. We don't have a geographical center, unlike all the other cities. We don't, it's not like there's a, there's the real Gaithersburg town center. There's a bunch of different town centers in Gaithersburg. And so one of the things I've been saying for the last 12 years is that a redevelopment of Lake Forest provides us with potential opportunity to have some sort of unifying space or, or use or place that people, when they think of Gaithersburg, you know, what is the town square? Maybe that could be here on, on this property. Uh, and it, it, it could take the form of a theater or it could take the form of a distinctive, you know, public space. Like I, I remember going to Mexico City many years ago and, and there's, you know, when, when there's a big national soccer game, there's one place where everybody gathers in the city and there's the giant screen. And there's no question about where you're going to go to see the, see that game, right? Where would that place be? Maybe that place could be on this site. And so however, we have to get the language. Whether it, whether it's that kind of thing or whether it's something, you know, smaller scale. I think, but I think it's important. Uh, I think it's incredibly important to have a distinctive public space and amenity as part of this project. So hopefully that's, that's some sort of help. Who, who'd like to weigh in next? We'll go to Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I completely agree with you. I mean, half of me wants to say go big or go home. And, and, and mean that, but then I also have to realize that we don't own this property and we're the regulatory body over this property. And somebody's got to, to ultimately articulate what they want to develop on it with, with, hopefully within partnership with us. And so I, I think, you know, in articulating the vision for amenities, I, I, we should be permissive and flexible at this point. But articulate a grander vision as you were just, as you just mentioned, you know, when I, when I think of a lot of the communities within that archi, archipelago, archipelago, that is Gaithersburg, you know, we have, we have communities that have distinction to them, you know, the, the Catlins has, has a ring of green space that I, I can't think of any other areas in, 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 in our immediate area that quite have that, the, the green space and the, the lakes and the outdoor amenities that the Catlins has. Um, you know, you've got the Rio, which is centered around a lake, a manmade lake. Uh, so somebody had the foresight many, many years ago to build that and it, I, I can't think of any place in, probably the DMV that has something like that. I mean, you might think of, you know, going down Alexandria where they have the, 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 the natural Anacostia, but the, the Rio was built that way by development. So at this point, I, I think that I, I don't think that we should be hammering home specifics as far as what kind of amenities should be on the site, but we should be kind of broad stroke and in a way that is flexible, kind of articulating as a vision should.
Thank you, Rob. And I, I want to also commend staff and anybody from the public, from our focus groups or whoever suggested that there can be some good use made out of the stormwater ponds on the Lake Forest property. There's some, there's some potential to, to make something usable and, and experiential and make it, use it for place making. Who, who'd like to weigh in next? Mike, please.
So I get, I guess, uh, first just a little geography lesson. There, there are no natural lakes in the, in the entire state of Maryland. Everything is manmade. Every body of water that's, uh, surrounded by, by a large, by land. So you know, the lakes in Catlins and, and the lakes at Lake Forest are all manmade. I think it's great to be able to take advantage of them. And we've, you know, we've always joked about if we had a river down the middle of Old Town, that would, that would be something that would be pretty cool and an opportunity to develop. But I, but I, I like the idea of including in the vision, the type of amenities that we've talked about, both indoor and outdoor, but this also contributes to the, you know, obviously part of the sense of place. And it's not just attractive to families and residents in the adjacent neighborhoods, but to the entire region. I think it's, it's, it's important to remember that the county has a, over a million residents in the county. And there's really only one large space for indoor celebrations such as symphonies and dance and traveling theater, et cetera. And that's the Strathmore. And that barely, you know, that barely holds 1,300 people. I'm not saying that we needed something like that, but I think including something like that, whether it seats 300 or seats over 1,000, that's, that's an option to think about. And obviously, I think the biggest concern with developing something like that is how do you make sure that it's used 365 days a year? Because otherwise it's not sustainable. So a public-private partnership makes sense. That's one of the options I think you put on it, on the table. And hopefully you will find a developer or set of developers that can help us create something like that. But I think it's, it's a big vision. But I think Rob reasonably summarized what I was getting at in terms of how, I'm talking about Rob Robinson, not Rob Wu, but Rob Wu was pretty close. Is that the amenities are actually an important part because they create, they're part of an attraction for businesses and residents. But they're also a contributor to the, to the economic environment that we want to create in a place like this, as well as the social environment that we want to enhance. So I think that the, the options and 80 acres that you have space for both pocket parks and something on, on a larger scale and everything in between. And so we have to think about how we propose that and convince the people that are coming in here and develop these properties that this is an important part of the vision that they need to capture as they propose these plans. So, you know, the arts and entertainment district that Loriann proposed, suggested is another way of looking at, at, at this. But, you know, just, it's got to be one of the, the four or five priorities for this vision that, that we're talking about. So that's, that's it for now.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Sharon Kentrop.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So I don't think we have to go too far to look at a city that has been successful but had to reinvent themselves, Columbia, Maryland. After 50 years, Meriwether Post Pavilion has high school graduations. It has concert, it's a concert venue, but they had to create different districts because after 50 years, it's aged and they got the community to, to kind of weigh in on what it should look like in the vision for Columbia going forward. Again, an aging mall, but they repurposed a lot of the mall. But they have residential, they've got, you know, they use the Lake Kitten McConde as a stormwater management pond, which is a manmade lake, to create the town center originally. So you're right, Mike, that was a manmade lake and they built the community 50 years ago around the lake. And also you don't have to go too far because Silver Spring, the civic center is, is a great, a beautiful building that has meetings and events and it's award winning. And again, it's a, it's a center of a civic community in a urban area. So there's a lot of models in Maryland that we could use. You don't have to go to Virginia or anywhere else.
Good points. We'll go to Neil. And then we'll go to Phil after Neil.
Many good points. I'm just trying to figure out, to envision how this all fits together, once it's together. So we're talking about so far, a space with much less retail than is there today. Much more, well, considerable amount of residential, which probably means going up and not, not the typical single family in townhomes that we see, but more like multifamily buildings, apartments and/or condos. If we're building a job center, we're probably going up as well. So I think we need to keep in mind what this is going to look like. If we're going to have a bunch of six-story buildings, that means that it's less nature oriented, which may or may not fit the vision. I think we just need to, I'm just trying to make sure that it all fits together in some cohesive manner. If we're going to have a mix of primarily jobs and multi-story buildings with residential, we probably want some sort of indoor civic facility as opposed to an outdoor facility. And we're close enough to Bora Park where we can probably accommodate our outdoor needs at, at that facility and don't need to do as much of it here. So just trying to see how all the pieces are going to fit together. But I mean, so far we've got a very radically different vision than what exists there today, which is important, but also I think what the developer has so far been thinking of, who owns the property. So bringing all that into alignment is going to be an interesting challenge. I'll reserve any more comments till we see more pieces of the puzzle as part of this presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Neil. We'll go to Phil.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I think I had just a couple of comments and to circle back to what John was saying after the last segment about redefining mixed use. I think, I think the key here to, to give Rob's team and staff a little bit of guidance, what I'm hearing out of all this discussion, what I sort of suggest is that, you know, we need to redefine civic use and maybe put another name on it. Because civic use conjures up images of, you know, courthouses and schools and, you know, all the typically civic things. And, you know, when we, when we put this master plan element together, I think a, a rebranding of civic use as something else with a lot of explanation. And, and, you know, it really is at, at the master plan level, it's about a vision and to Neil's point, whether it's six stories or 10 stories and, and, you know, what goes where is sort of, it's up to the developer or the property owner to sort of decide how he, how he or she wants to meet the elements of the master plan. So, you know, Rob, maybe, maybe we're going to get into, you know, prescriptive densities at some point here. But that, that's more, it sounds much more of a zoning discussion than a master plan vision discussion to me.
Thank you, Phil. Not seeing any other, John Bauer, go right ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I'll pick up where it's left off with the amenities, I think, being more important. And it's clear from this discussion, more important than just a secondary use of the site. So with that, one, one idea for imagining how we talk about this at a master plan level and not at a specific case study level, although all the examples are great. You know, between Columbia and Silver Spring and Vancouver. And, you know, even like that little Scott Fitzgerald Theater in Rockhampton, there's all kinds of great examples within, within striking distance. It's, it's starting to sound to me like there's a, there's a discussion or there's a description of a, of a thing, a component of this that goes with a range of uses from indoor to outdoor, from sort of public to exclusive, which also has sort of a cost implication to it. And kind of the duration of what it's used for. So from, from a one-time, you know, evening event to a two-week-long, you know, training thing or something. The, the point is that I think the way we start to get after this in our, in our master plan language is to talk about the broad ranges of ways that this amenity could be used and allow for it to be anything from a quick pickup picnic event that's, you know, free and kind of open to the public like our parks would be, to something as exclusive as a high-end, you know, reception that would, that would accompany, you know, some, some particularly important event. And all of that's on the table, I think, as, as being solvable, even to the point of having it functioning as a venue for, for a paid performance of some kind. You know, so you kind of let it cross into those different realms. With, and that's the description I think we get after in the master plan. And then how it actually gets realized and what kind of language you wrap around it to inspire the solution, that will probably come later.
Excellent point. Okay. Not seeing any other hands. I'll turn it back over to Rob to keep going with the presentation.
Thank you, everyone, for that great comments there. That's very helpful and a lot of it aligns with already where staff's head sort of was going with some of these things. Moving on to the next slide, so page 29. The next facet, which Councilmember Sales had touched on earlier, is transportation. So again, the majority consensus, sort of building off the vision, was provide connectivity with the surrounding area. We heard this time and again, how important it is. And when you, if you can visualize back to the aerial, it's really surrounded by large roads, you know, be it Montgomery Village Avenue or Oden Hall, even Russell and Lostknife are larger. So it, it could lend itself to the propensity of being very insular, which, you know, is clear from, to staff's opinion and it sounds like council, too. That's not the goal of a redeveloped Lake Forest Mall. The existing mall is very insular. We want to try to open up this with the connectivity. We believe internally, obviously a grid-like street pattern in the redevelopment is very important internally. This increases porosity, this limits speeds, this helps allow us to bring in other modes, leading to the next point in height, enhanced bicycle and pedestrian facilities and safety. The council may remember, and the planning commission number years ago, we received the TLC grant for first mile, last mile connectivity. And they had talked about, you know, essentially all the deficits within the Lake Forest area for bike ped facilities. Enhance and integrate the transit center into the redevelopment was something that we heard from the majority consensus and potentially relocating the transit center. And again, we phrase this as majority consensus. This was not a universal opinion. There were enough voices in the materials that wanted the transit center to stay where it is. But the overall majority felt it could be better located and operational. And of course, we heard it, and this ties back into the bicycle and pedestrian safety. Minimize or eliminate the large surface parking lots. Next slide, please. So to give a little context, this image on the top left is the existing transit center. That is it. So that is what's, you know, handling 3,500 trips, you know, a day and forecast to go even bigger. Reaffirming, you know, reorienting with the aerial. The black circles are the ingress egress points. The star is basically the rough approximation of where that transit center is. And, you know, the main sort of entrance, you know, somewhat, if you wanted to call it that, Lake Forest Boulevard, and even coming from the county side Contour Road is highlighted. Next slide, please. So given all this information, staff is recommending that the role of the master plan should be including statements that include a circulation system that encourages safe biking and walking throughout and facilitates internal connectivity through a grid-like street pattern. It should acknowledge and respond to the known external connectivity points to the surrounding areas. While we said we weren't going to do design stuff based upon the context, we feel the master plan should potentially encourage a connection between Lake Forest Boulevard and Contour Road. It would be a straight shot through in this, you know, for whatever reasons, however it's used, be it an art and entertainment district or whatever, could potentially serve as the focal connectivity through the site. The master plan should discourage large surface parking lots related to retail in particular as part of the ultimate build-out vision, which we will get to at the very end as we talk about phasing. And that the master plan should encourage shared and structured parking in order to make more land available for other uses, going to Councilmember Harris's statement. We're saying a lot of stuff, but if you go big and you go compact, you get more open space to develop. Next slide, please. Further, staff, you know, we advocate for the retention of the transit center regardless, whether, you know, it remains essentially in the same location or not. It serves such a valuable and important resource to linking up county and down county and to underserved populations with access to jobs. But we do feel the encouragement should be a possible relocation closer to Maryland 355. And a lot of that is in response to the potential BRT. That's, it's more looking at it from an operational standpoint. It would work better closer to 355. But we do feel, you know, enhancement to the station and designing it so that it can be integrated into a future redevelopment as opposed to sort of sequestered lends to this greater mixed use vision now that is more than just retail and residential. You know, you, you can build stuff in, in the focus groups, an example that often came up to a much lesser scale is Union Station down in DC, especially now what they're doing, putting residential over top. You have the commercial component, then you have the stuff. Obviously, we're not going to get to that level. But that doesn't mean, you know, it just has to be a, a covered stand on the side of the road. It can be a little bit more. However, staff is very much adamant that we don't support a large surface parking ride facility or a bus depot in conjunction with the transit center. If we want to create a walkable, bikeable community, we, we don't need those things. You know, they, they can go at other places. You know, this can serve as the linchpin without having to be a bus depot. Next slide, please. So with that, what we're really asking the commission and council for is, you know, do you have any thoughts on the transit center? And in particular, do you have any thoughts on the parking strategy? And are there any other traffic fast, transportation facets outside of what we discussed to be included in the master plan? And again, I'll, I'll open it up.
Thank you, Rob. So first off, it's my inclination is we shouldn't be prescriptive about what happens with the transit center, but we should, we should be open to the possibility of, of it being relocated. And obvious, I think that, you know, structured parking versus surface parking is, I can't imagine there's disagreement on that point. So, and I, I think the suggestions that have come out of the public process and from staff are absolutely on the right track. Who'd like to weigh in on this? Neil Harris, and then we'll go to Phil.
So I think the, regarding the transit center, the important question is who's using it and who will use it? My understanding today is that it's significantly used by the staff at Asbury. And it is located as close to Asbury as it possibly could be on that property today. So I think that we should consider that as a possible, as a possible important factor in making the decision about what to do with it. If that's less of an issue, I would say moving it closer to 355, but in the same general vicinity, because it is an important linchpin that ties together the various parts of the county and makes that property more accessible and would connect it to BRT or express buses on 355.
Thank you, Neil. We'll go to Phil.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, you know, I definitely think we need to keep and, and should keep the transit center somewhere on the property. I think, Neil, I think if, obviously we're envisioning the, the number of, or the priority of the riders that are, and the generator of the traffic, obviously to change in a redeveloped situation. Hopefully the staff at Asbury would mind walking through nice streets a lot less than they'd mind walking across, you know, 80 acres of parking lot to get from the bus to their, to their place of employment. I think my, my main sort of comment here is that we, we need to not forget about Old Town in this discussion. It is just barely outside of our magical half-mile circle, but not far enough outside that it's, it's not a consideration here, especially on the transit side. You know, we've got the Mark Station, there's the, the city parking garage in Old Town. And there's a, there's a large amount of commuter traffic that goes through Old Town. And so, you know, it's a little hard to, to integrate into the master plan for this site because it's not part of the property. But, but making sure that we're paying attention to the connections between this site and Old Town, I think really that, that's a, that's a really powerful sort of coupling synergy, for lack of a better word, between, between this site and the historic center of, of Gaithersburg that we, we need to not overlook.
Thank you, Phil. We'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I think Phil brought up a really good point. I misspoke earlier and said Summit, I meant Russell Avenue for the Transit Center. When I think of the Lake Forest Mall, I know that we think of Old Town as the heartbeat of the city, but I think of Lake Forest as the cornerstone of our community. And that's what it could be. It could be a little bit of everything that we all want, but it really integrates everything into our community from the seniors at Asbury, the biotech corridor, Old Town, the 355 corridor. And so all of these things are coming through the Lake Forest Mall area. And I, I really think this is going to be an exciting opportunity. Just looking forward to more discussion, but definitely the transit's going to be very important at this site.
Thank you, Loriann. Do we have, Rob Wu, go right ahead.
Yeah, just briefly echoing what, what staff has said and what everyone else has said is I, I think we should require, there, there should be a transit center somewhere in this area to support both local traffic, to, you know, support the, the metro station as the metro extends up to Frederick or the monorail coming down or BRT on 355. The point is there's a lot of externalities and a lot of fanciful thoughts about transportation that will, I think, need to play into this. But I think that this area in particular would well serve the north, south, east and west as a transit hub as it has been, or, or, and, you know, enhancing that into the future.
Thank you, Rob. Mike?
All right, let me make it for people who have considered that.
All right, let me, uh, make it for people who, uh, uh, have considered that. I think, uh, the fact that we have seven bus routes that, that converge or intersect at the transit center. Suggest that it, that it actually serves a lot more people than just employees at Asbury. And in fact, if whatever development mixed use as we are redefining it. Occurs here, that certainly residents will be encouraged to consider living in that area because of the availability of, uh, of the effective, an effective transit system. So I, I think we should encourage the, the retention and, and likely the movement. Now, the first time we've really talked about any detail in this property in terms of a street grid was the. Connection of Lake Forest to con- like Lake Forest Boulevard to, to contour. So that really kind of bisects the property, but it doesn't, you know, you know, effectively if this development is. Happens correctly, it's not really dividing the property. It, it, it's more like a junction where, uh, the center of activity is going to be. Will kind of align itself along, uh, this, uh, the path from Lake Forest Boulevard through to, to, uh, contour. So it, it actually does a better job of integrating, I think, the pieces of property that could result here from the street grid. Uh, that, that, uh, has been proposed in other parts of this project. So again, I, I, I think, uh, encouraging, definitely we want to retain it. And encouraging the, the relocation of the transit, transit center to a, a better place. And perhaps, uh, a further development and enhancement of the transit center. So that actually looks like, uh, more than just a collection of benches with the, with the roof over it. So, uh, that's an important part. So it should be compatible with the design that we see, the architecture that we see. On the red, in the rest of this, uh, redeveloped property. So.
Thanks, Mike. Um, John Bauer.
I just have a question. Um, is the transit center, um, and I should know this, but don't apologize. Is it, is it actually a public, how, how is the land designated for that? Or how is the?
It was earmarked through easement, John. So it's, it's an actual easement granted to Montgomery County Department of Transportation.
Okay. And do you, do, is there any data about? It, this, this sounds a little counterintuitive, but is there any traffic generated by, not bus traffic, but automobile traffic generated by having the transit center where it is? Is there, um, you know, some parking demands? Is there, you know, uh, trip generation, things like that? Is that of, of any real substance? I mean, incidental, I'm not worried about it.
So again, the, the background material was the twenty fifteen study and obviously some stuff has changed. The, uh, the surface parking lot immediately behind the existing transit center was earmarked, uh, through some supplemental documents, like two hundred spaces. So people do use that as a parking ride, but anecdotally what we're seeing is while some people use it, it, it is not a full lot. This is really a, a connectivity point, you know, it's, it's really a place for transfers. Um, boardings to get downtown or a lightings to get off to work in the immediate area. So it's really hasn't functioned so far, um, really as a kiss and ride, um, thing. But that's why I wanted to make the statement that should it be relocated and hands bring in BRT? With the acknowledgement that, that much of the, the panel has made about limited space and what you can do. We don't want to gobble up ten acres to create, you know, a bus depot or a kiss and ride lot.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, I will hand back to Rob Robinson to continue.
Eric, I think, okay. Sorry, I thought Phil had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see. Phil, did, did you have another thing to add?
Uh, my, my one and only comment to, to Rob on, you know, not wanting a kiss and ride. I think. The, the caveat to that is it depends what it looks like. And I think knowing this area, the economics of the site wouldn't support some of the. Well-designed, less impactful sort of intermodal facilities that I've seen elsewhere. You know, parking below grade, bus depots below grade, but should it, you know? Should there be a developer that has a, a business case to develop a kiss and ride, an intermodal facility? That doesn't require eighty acres of surface parking lot. I don't think we want to preclude that. So I think we just need to be careful on how, and how we word it.
And again, we are, we are, we are totally aligned because as I mentioned in the recommendation, it's only related to surface.
Okay.
It, it's not related to potential integrated or structured.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Go ahead, Rob. Oh, wait, what, hold on, hold on. Mike?
Yeah, you know, I think there's, uh, there's ample examples throughout the United States of, uh, of a, a transit center in locations like this. Where BRT and other, uh, routes, uh, interconnect and do so with, uh, a limited parking, parking pad. But they're still effectively used. So, you know, I, I, I think the idea is that we need to consider. How this, uh, transit center is integrated into the entire project. That's what we should encourage. And then we should look, uh, we should encourage some, uh, some designs that make sense, whether it's below grade, uh, parking. Or even a below grade bus route that goes underneath the entire mall and connects, uh, contour to, uh, to Lake Forest Boulevard. I mean, that, you know, uh, as long as we're putting stuff on the table, let's think big, you know, so.
All right. Thanks, Mike. All right. So Rob, go ahead. We need to get this presentation going again.
Thank you. All right. Next slide, please. So up till now, we've talked about a lot of framework stuff and infrastructure. Let's get into the nuts and bolts really of a land use master plan. So the first discussion is related to residential. Um, staff was very surprised. The majority consensus is housing should not be a priority, but needs to be a component, um, of a redevelopment. And when there is housing, it should support a variety of denser housing types at different dry, uh, price points to promote affordability. We heard a lot about affordable housing, but not in the sense of programmatic regulated affordable housing. It was related to housing affordability. That seems to be, uh, a forefront topic across all platforms that we did engagement. Um, support for an equal balance of housing for young professionals, families with children and older adults. Again, that was a, another thought. Um, I know Kirk had mentioned, you know, right now, um, it skews towards smaller households and all that. But we know from the visioning data, that's really not how the rest of the city is really functioning. And there was a lot of discussion and concern that we're losing a, a lot of brain drain. That when people get out of college who come from this area, they can't remain in this area. Um, there is support for housing addressing the missing middle that you hear a lot about. And that we should support, um, unique housing types not currently found in the city. Um, next slide, please. So with that, staff is recommending for the master plan that we emphasize that housing is an essential aspect of a mall redevelopment. But should not be considered the primary or predominant land use. Basically what we're saying is, you know, forty acres shouldn't be devoted to housing. Housing, when there is housing should be high density, include a variety of types that offer opportunities both for owners and renters. That meets the needs of singles and families and offers a range of price points. And we're very clear, you know, based upon this first bullet, that traditional single family detached is not appropriate for this site. We don't need, you know, four units to the acre, uh, type of development on this site. Um, aligning with the visioning data analysis, we should be encouraging multifamily as the preeminent housing form. That's balanced with the open space and amenities and should have more larger units to address the projections going forward. And we should be encouraging the missing middle units not commonly found in the city. Uh, next slide, please. So really what I'm stating is multifamily, as on this slide, can take many forms. And as we're going forward, while some of these may not exist now in the city, um, we have the ability potentially even to do high rise in the long term. Um, on the bottom slide, um, is, is the condo project over at Crown that's built on a podium. Um, the top left is actually over at Spectrum, so it's multifamily rental. So again, just because we're talking about multi-family, doesn't mean we're only talking about apartments. Next slide, please. And when we discuss the missing middle and start trying to seek and encourage new housing forms not currently found in the city. Um, top left of the screen are two over twos that are found in Crown. But on the right side is a triplex. That's three individual condos in a three-story building. And at the bottom is a bungalow court. Um, this is, you know, set up in a condo regime and these are small. While they're technically single family detached, they're all about, you know, maybe eleven hundred square feet or under. And they have no yards. They share that common green and the building at the end is actually the community amenity building that can be used by anyone. This is a development that's occurring right now in Virginia, so it can happen. So while we don't really see these used a lot here in the city, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be trying to advocate for these going forward. Next slide, please. So with that, the questions we really want to ask is, you know, what are the feelings of the council and commission related to what is the role housing should play? Should it be the focal land use? Um, it was brought up earlier, you know, should the master plan potentially try to address some densities at, at a broad scale? And are there housing types that should or should not be included or emphasized? Uh, again, is there support for basically going no big single family detached? And, you know, to help the mayor, I'll open it up to the floor once again.
Thank you, Rob. So I'll, I'll start here and just say, um, I don't. At the very least, I know I don't, I, I, I wouldn't prefer housing in the master plan or residential to be minimized. I think residential is really important here, uh, because one of, one of the roles that we want. This Lake Forest redevelopment to be the catalyst for, uh, re, you know, further redevelopment rejuvenation. Of the east side, Old Town, uh, this whole area, we need to raise the area median household income. And by do, i- in order to do that, we need to increase the stock of, uh, high quality market rate of housing. And that, which isn't to say that any project wouldn't have to have its share of affordable housing per our ordinance. It would. But I think the market rate housing is particularly important in this spot, in this part of town for its impact. And it, as a cattle, potential catalyst for what's to come. Um, in terms of densities, you know, I'll leave it to others to, to determine that, you know, in, in terms of words like preeminent and predominant. I'm not sure what impacts those particularly have, uh, but I certainly don't want to have. I think it's an important, uh, as, and as the recommendation says, I think it's an essential component. Uh, whether it's preeminent or predominant, I'll, I'll leave that up to the planners to, to come up with the right wording on it. But we need housing, we need market rate in that area. I think it's really important. And in, in terms of types, I'll also leave that up to planners and, and developers to, to, uh, uh, propose what they think would work and what's best. Who'd like to weigh in on this next? We'll go to Phil and then Loriann.
As, as, as someone who bought my first house, my wife and I bought our first house in Old Town. For the very reason that it was the only place in the city where we could afford market rate, single family houses. I, I totally agree that we need more market rate, uh, houses on this side of the town. I think the real devil is in the details as Rob presented. It is, you know, what type of market rate house and, you know, and what, what type of? How do we define the, the, the housing types so that the market rate housing is affordable to a wider swath of people? I think that, that is, that is the key here that, that we need to have market rate housing that is, that is affordable to a wider swath of people. Because, you know, and I know Mike is, is passionate on this issue and, 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 um. Has, has a daughter who recently went through the challenge of finding, finding affordable housing in, in Gaithersburg. And, you know, we, we want, we want more of that. We want it. Market rate housing is affordable to, to more people at more price points. So, Mike, two cents.
Thank you, Phil. We'll go Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I believe it was last year that, um, uh, we had the project from Crown. Come before us to downsize on the, uh, mega mansions that they wanted to build in their community. And so, um, I think the push is to be, uh, uh, more creative in our housing options for, uh, this area. Definitely prioritize, um, density. I too was surprised by the usage of, um. Housing shouldn't be a priority here, but I appreciate the addition and inclusion of, uh, that it will be essential. As we heard from, uh, Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments in their, um, regional assessment about the housing needs and the housing shortages. And with the city of Gaithersburg being one of the fastest growing cities in the state, um, we're going to, uh. This would be prime real estate for, um, housing, um, of, uh, different types. Um, I suggested duplexes in the, uh, Crown development, but, um, I don't think anyone shared that, uh. That vision for that space. So I appreciate the, uh, uh, um, unique addition of the different types of housing. And, uh, what this could look like and what this could include. So.
Thank you, Loriann. Ryan.
Uh, I agree with all that.
After Ryan, we'll go to.
I agree with all of that. Uh, and I'm a supporter of the idea of exploring, uh, some of the creative or alternative housing types. Whether it's bungalows or duplexes or triplexes, uh, a lot of, um, municipalities around the country and around the world. Are coming up with some creative things and there's no reason why we in Gaithersburg couldn't be, uh, leading more on that front, given the need. I'm a generally a supporter of more density. I am not averse to going higher in terms of building heights, uh, in this area. Uh, whether it's for, uh, rental or for ownership units or a mix thereof. Um, I think, you know, the reality is that even as a suburban city that has traditionally had lower heights to, to our buildings. Even in our, uh, more dense and more mixed use developments, uh, we can go a little higher. Um, and there are environmental benefits, there are affordability benefits. Uh, there are other community development benefits of just, of just being a little denser, as long as we manage it appropriately. In terms of transportation options and amenities and mixed uses, uh, nearby. So I'm supporter of, of more, uh, residential density and, and creative types. Uh, but I also agree that while that should be a key component of this plan going forward. It should not be the biggest driver of this plan because we risk, uh, falling into the trap of having this be a largely residential development. Without the true mixed use feel and component and balance that we want to have with all of the other things that we've been discussing tonight. In terms of amenities and, uh, uh, you know, commercial and, and office and everything else. So, um, as the mayor said, you know, I don't know exactly what the language is in terms of predominant, preeminent. We don't want housing to be a small component of this, but we also don't want it to be such a big driver that it overwhelms. The true mixed use that we want to achieve.
Very well put. I happen to agree on the building heights too. We'll go to Matt Hopkins.
Yeah, let me, um, uh, answer Rob's piece and I'll try not to do too long a diatribe, but it's, um. I think, uh, the housing not being a priority, I would, I would sort of rephrase that and think of it more of it as an architectural solution. There, you know, residential can be, can kill a street, but feet on the street, uh, activates a street, right? So there's a certain irony there along with parking. You know, we talk service and development, we talk loading, we talk, you know, uh, drop off. We talk, um, parking and we talk residential entries, right? And residential pri- you know, really private but multifamily amenities. Those things are actually all drains on the vibrancy of a street, but they're critical to supply the vibrancy to the street. So there's a little bit of a language piece there that, you know, so, uh, you wouldn't want to put on a prime corner. With any of your, any of our pseudo civic uses or any, any of the little bit of retail, we're going to be able to eke out here or any of the large. Uh, indoor activated, uh, outdoor spaces, uh, you're not going to want to put a residential lobby at that corner. Cause that's, it'll kill that corner. So I think when we talk about the prioritization of residential, it's not necessarily density. I think density is great. More feet on the street is increases activity. Uh, but it, the actual architecturalization of that residential is really critical to get it out of the area that you want to be vibrant. So, you know, we used to just sort of blindly rely on retail to sort of zone it everywhere and, and it would, it would create vibrancy. But, uh, but that doesn't work. It didn't work then. It's certainly not going to work now. Uh, and so now we have to actually create a series of other uses, uh, just as Rob laid out. But I think the residential piece is really about, just like parking, it's really about pulling it to the service side of things. And making sure that it doesn't kill, you know, dampen the activity that's on the street. So that's all.
Thanks, Matt. We'll go to Rob Wu with then Mike Sessma.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and, and so I'm pretty much where I think you and Ryan are on this. Um, and, and pretty much where Matt is as well. And my, my concern is that when I think the, the language was discussed earlier in the presentation by staff. I heard somebody say that they didn't want it to be above 50% and, and I'm not sure I'd be wedded to, to, to that kind of number. If, if, if staff is intending predominantly or preeminently to be linked to less than half of the use on the site. So hearkening back to, for example, our visioning exercise, you know, where we took a hard look at what was needed in the city as a whole, and not necessarily at the site, but I think we, in taking that look, we, we came to the conclusion that the, the old consensus that we were looking for to be a job center, you know, two thirds, one third, um, employment center to residential really should be flipped on its head. And so how do you apply that, for example, to this site then, if we're talking about having less than 50% use, if we were in the visioning context, talking about two thirds to one third flipping on its head? So I, I don't know what the, the, the density of residential should be prescriptively. I, I kind of like the way Ryan put it where I don't view this as, as being a predominantly residential bedroom community type thing where we're just putting housing out there that it really has to be a vibrant mixed use. That's why I like the way Matt's describing it is that, you know, you, you, you want feet on the ground to drive the other uses in the area. One thing that I'm really concerned about, and this is kind of going to what Phil was talking about with respect to, uh, a mix of houses at various price points is how we do that in a, in a, uh, market rate context. We have to pay attention to that because, you know, this is an area where they said before, you know, eight percent is, is restrictive housing, 92% is market rate housing and it's below other areas in Gaithersburg and other areas of the region. And so if you were developing the area and you're looking for, and you're, you're building, doing it in such a way that you're driving, um, um, housing that's more attractive to, for example, the, the scientists and the professionals that are coming to the area. You're going to drive up housing costs in the entire area. And so we have to think about what we are doing here with respect to housing and what price points and how we're developing. Do we need more prescriptive housing in the area? I know this is H O C site across from Lost Knife, but with only eight percent being restricted housing and we're trying to drive up the household incomes in the area, that means 92% of the housing is going to be less affordable than it already is. And so I think we need to think about that.
Thanks, Rob. We'll go to Mike.
Thanks. Uh, thanks, Judd. And, uh, thanks for this kind of analysis that we have from staff and I, there isn't much I disagree with from, that I've heard from planning commission and, and council so far. I think the only thing that I, I think that, uh, the firm answer that I'm sure we would all agree with is that uh, single family detached isn't appropriate for redevelopment here. And, you know, I think, uh, Rob Wu just mentioned and, and Phil started with this is that we want housing here to be affordable. And I'm talking about the affordable housing under our ordinance, we want it to be affordable so that people who live here now might be able to move up to housing here. And that includes people who live in this particular part of the city. So, um, we, you know, I think in recent years, uh, a pretty exclusive community was created in one part of the city. And I think it's, uh, it's a wonderful community, but it certainly has price points, a high entry, uh, price point that, uh, really limits the people, the, the families that can, that can live there. I think, uh, the idea of providing opportunity, housing opportunities for a wider range, income range, uh, becomes important. So, you know, part of our housing policy is to have inclusive housing development, and that's what we should consider here, whether we call that market rate or we call it something else. I think we certainly want it to be. We don't want to create a project that basically ends up influencing everything around it so that it becomes unaffordable to people, to many of the families who live here now. So I think that's an important consideration. Other than that, I, I think the, the wording of how we talk about housing in this mixed use project is to consider housing, not whether or not it's a, it's a primary goal over this redevelopment, but think about it as how it fits into our overall priorities for this redevelopment. So housing is a major, is a significant element of it, but it's not the only significant element. There are three or four things we've talked about already. So, um, that's how I would approach it. I don't, don't disagree with any of the analysis I've heard. Or the ideas that I've heard from our colleagues too. Density is not a problem. Density can be a problem if it's not executed properly. Okay. Feet on the street as, as Matt talked about is pretty important. That's part, that's partly in the design of the, the community. So, um, we expect to see those kinds of creative ideas from people who want to build in the city. So that's it. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Mike. John Bauer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the one point I'd like to add or, or request, um, one of the effects of how we've managed housing in our newest developments and newest development projects has resulted in a relatively consistent form, the building forms, the type of units, how, how the, the site plans tend to work, um, the density. And it's, it's both in, I think it's both because of sort of our, our imposed ceilings on how much can be developed, but also the economics of building types and what it, what construction costs to go three stories versus six stories versus 12 stories. So I'm leaning with this, this is a perfect opportunity to figure out how we develop language that allows for even encourages or facilitates on a multifamily densest side, buildings that are more like eight, 10, 12 stories tall as opposed to four, five or six. And then how we then also make it possible that sort of the, the little gazebo houses or whatever, um, the cottage houses forms, whatever that, whatever that was called, something all the way down to that, or even the more contemporary triplexes, the sort of triples like they call in Boston, um, could be a possibility here too, across that range because of the way we could create, um, density formats or density incentives for doing one or the other. And then to the point of market housing or market priced housing, then you would essentially get that range from the most affordable at a market level. Never mind the fact we will also have affordable housing as, as its strictest form. All the way up through something that also generates housing that frankly, might be a little bit higher than, than what you're used to seeing in that area. And that's okay. That's okay to have that range. Um, I think that benefits everybody. But I think it's going to take a little bit of a working session to focus specifically on how we're describing what we imagine for density and for the incentive for building more dense, more units in a taller building versus picking that middle that seems to now really be pervasive everywhere, everywhere in the county. Frankly, it's not only here, but it's, it's throughout the county and it's, it's this weird balance between what I think perceived density is from a square footage and a, you know, F A R kind of mindset offset by what it costs to actually build buildings. And we've got to somehow get ahead of that and figure out a way to make it possible to do relatively tall buildings or high rise buildings with, with residential and, and make it, make it a, a feasible, economically feasible component. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I, I think you make a, a good point about it. I understand the concerns of my colleagues about, um, about housing prices, but you know, I think this, this side of town happens to be out of balance and there, there are a lot of things that are a lot of factors that either, either stabilize the market rate prices where they are, which is below where they are in other parts of, of the city. Or take or drag, sort of drag them down. And I think we need with this project, we have an opportunity to create some sort of upward force as well. And I think that can help us get in, help it sort of catalyze and get into balance. But that, I think we can get into, into this a little bit, um, in the future. I'm going to let Rob Robinson move ahead with the, uh, presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's time for a handoff. Um, next slide, please. So we're moving into the other big facet, commercial. And I feel while I can speak to it academically, it's more appropriate for Mr. Lonergan to discuss, uh, what occurred and what our recommendations are. So Tom.
Maybe so, Robert. Maybe it's just time to be able to let you take a, take a breath for a few minutes. So let me, let me steer for a few slides here about the commercial portion of this presentation. Majority consensus, uh, Gaithersburg's office and traditional retail market was weak before the pandemic. They continue to be post pandemic and may continue to be probably means will likely to be. While our class A office and retail assets were performing relatively well, compared to, uh, other submarkets in the region, much of cities, uh, B and C office inventory was stagnating and rents had not yet risen to a level that could support new construction. All the working will most certainly further affect future demand for general, uh, generic office space. And as overretail as Gaithersburg submarket was prior to COVID, we think the ascension of online shopping in a post-COVID world will likely only further reduce demand for additional brick and mortar space for traditional retail. But the feeling was that we should focus on diversifying the job base to afford a variety of pay scales with opportunities for upward mobility. Retail in general does not pay well and has limited opportunity for professional development. There are other commercial uses that can employ people of mixed skills with broader pay ranges. And, uh, we, and should go beyond, uh, retail. The commercial focus should be on, uh, the biotech industry. Small local businesses, incubators, spaces, restaurants, uh, and traditional neighborhood scaled, uh, services. As we've mentioned, uh, prior, uh, where data suggests there is still demand in our market. Public has expressed a strong desire for experiential retail uses. Uh, we hear that term a lot. Generally, as you know, it refers to a store in which stuff happens in addition to selling and shoppers do things beyond buying. It's the idea that retailer offers consumers a chance to buy an experience rather than just an object or service. Simply put, it, it's more than just a place to shop. Will also express support for integrating professional services with other uses. Uh, I guess they broke down the definition of mixed use even more granularly to a place where traditional office users aren't restricted to traditional office buildings. Any commercial development should contribute to and enhance, not compete with existing commercial. In short, let's do our best not to cannibalize the city's existing shopping centers. It's a supplied market, couple of weakened demand could cause our existing centers to lose both tenants and value. Next slide, please. So as for the recommendations, um, commercial elements should be focused on uses other than retail, such as biotechnology, health and professional services. These are sectors that are forecast to grow in the region, potentially provide the types of jobs that the community needs and could stand to benefit by. Retail scaled to neighborhood goods and services rather than large format, general merchandise stores. This industry sector that still demonstrates demand with insufficient supply in our city submarket. I believe Laura mentioned some of them. So, you know, the uses bakeries, day spas, uh, grocery stores, specialty food. These are some examples of neighborhood goods and services, um, and they could potentially support a successful redevelopment project here on the site. Job creation and advancement opportunities should also be priorities as should incorporation of maker spaces, experiential retail, entertainment uses, and even integrated light manufacturing. Uh, next slide, please. Continuing with the recommendations, uh, let's avoid creating competition with existing commercial development. As I mentioned, let's not cannibalize users from other centers and we should be mindful of the potential impacts of creating additional commercial inventory. Discourage low density uses. And alone, big box projects with large surface parking would not be prudent. Lost opportunities for other onsite development, uh, loss of sense of place and loss of open space are just a handful of reasons why this would not be appropriate for a re-envisioned mall site. Likewise, uh, warehousing, heavy industrial and distribution uses would also not be appropriate at this location. Uh, next slide, please. We should note the importance of design and creating an integrated interconnected community and avoid conflicts between uses. Commercial spaces should be designed to have flexibility to morph over time. Friends change and we should try to get ahead of future vacancy or obsolescence by creating spaces that can be repurposed down the road. Location, locations of budding, uh, Maryland 124, Russell Ave and Lost Knife desirable to larger commercial uses. Um, visibility and traffic counts matter to them than to others. Buildings on the perimeter should be oriented to take advantage of frontage on those major roads. Next slide, uh, just got some images to go through with you. Uh, the biotech industry, I've mentioned it a few times. It's an industry that we would obviously love to continue to grow here in the city, uh, with limited areas for new lab and R and D construction. This site could potentially provide space for new inventory. And for commercial retail development commingled, uh, good approach as low density development on the site would limit, uh, the realization of the site's fullest potential. Uh, slide 42, uh, um, let's support this higher density development, no surface parking versus this, then the next slide, which is a, a, a single story, single tenant, surface parked, uh, suburban anachronism. So moving on to staff guidance on slide 44. The questions for you are, what role should commercial uses play in the master plan? Should it be the focal land use? Are there specific uses preferred for emphasis or de-emphasis and even exclusion? Design elements to be defined as related to commercial uses. Here with Rob and with Sharon to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tom. Um, this is another case where, uh, I, I'm not inclined to be particularly prescriptive about how, to what degree we, you know, uh, commercials should be part of this plan. But it obviously should be, uh, flex, we should be open to it. It should be, um, available to be a, a part of, of the plan and, and in terms of design, I think, you know, everything that, that you pointed out in the, in the slides makes perfect sense. It's, you know, we're looking for higher density, uh, integration, if perhaps even sometimes residential on top of commercial. But opportunities like that and structured parking as opposed to street parking. I, I think that all makes sense. So um, I'm going to open it up to anybody else who'd like to weigh in on this. John Schlichting, were, were you raising your hand there? Was it a stretch?
That was a stretch. Sorry about that.
Okay, John Bauer.
Thanks. Two quick questions. Um, Tom and team. Two categories, I just wondered if you, if you considered or, or, or you either decided to sidestep and not include, or they could be there somehow or another. One was any sort of higher education training, um, kind of activities as part of the commercial mix and hospitality lodging as part of the, the commercial mix.
Uh, Rob, I don't know if you wanted to touch upon the educational part. I, I think the, uh, hospitality part, John, was more of a recognition that this is a submarket that has more hotel rooms than any other submarket, uh, in the region coupled with the, uh, you know, the, an uncertain future with that, with that industry about whether or not this would be an appropriate site to potentially develop more hotels. We currently have 13 in the city with over 2,200 rooms.
And, and to jump on the other part about higher education, um, that, that sort of goes back to our discussion about civic uses. There was a lot of discussion through the various, um, efforts about the need for, you know, job training, incubators, um, people were talking about, you know, college campuses, but realistically, given the space, you know, to build something like universities and Shady Grove would basically encompass the entire site. So while we're not opposed to it and we can obviously bring in these other facets. And again, this is an overview of stuff. We still have the master plan to write. So we're, we're, we're seeking guidance. So obviously we would support, you know, these, uh, these other types of things, but I, 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 I guess the, the, the concern would be at this stage right now to give it the same cachet as, as some of the other uses that we talked about in the presentation may be difficult because I potentially see more um, contextual difficulties with higher education with their needs, um, from a landmass standpoint.
Okay, thanks.
Phil.
Yeah. I guess my, my two cents here is that I'm, I'm totally on board. I think it makes sense to not have this be a, a retail focused, retail driven, you know, master plan site. But I think, and, and I think staff is recognizing this in, in the report they put together. I think retail is going to play a key component. I don't think you can develop a site this large with residential and the other uses without retail being a key part of it. My concern is a little bit the, the notion that nothing we do here should cannibalize retail or pose a risk to retail elsewhere in the city. Because I, I don't think that's possible. Um, you know, I, I, I don't have the data, but I would be willing to, you know, wager the $5 sitting in my wallet that if you looked at types and classes. to, you know, wager the $5 sitting in my wallet that if you looked at types and classes of retail, we've got a whole bunch of Class A top-shelf retail west of 270 and a whole bunch of Class B and C retail east of 270. So I think we should build some Class A retail on this side of the highway as part of this development. And it's going to compete with some of the other Class A retail, and I think that's okay. I think, you know, I don't think we should, and I don't think we're talking about a quantity of Class A retail on this site that is going to, you know, put Crown out of business. I think that's just not going to happen. So I don't think we should be afraid of a little competition in the retail market for some other top-shelf retail space.
Mike Sessma.
I think Phil made a good point. You know, if Macy's told us today that they want to maintain a they wanted to maintain a presence and a new type of footprint in redevelopment here, I would be pretty excited about that. But I think, you know, the reality is that the brick and mortar retail has changed. Certainly, if we're going to have a significant residential community here, you're going to need neighborhood services and retail associated with that. If we have a arts and entertainment or civic facility for cultural amenities, then that is probably going to create, hopefully, there's enough of a critical mass in those activities that it would draw certain types of retail, whether it's experiential or whether it's restaurants or or something like that. So I think that, you know, we have to plan and accept those as potential uses. I am certainly encouraged by the idea that we could have more biotech come in here. But, you know, even biotech and research and technology goes in waves as well, and it's not clear the types of facilities and space they would need and whether they would like to see residential above a laboratory space or a light industrial space. But I like the idea of maker spaces. There probably aren't enough of them in an urban core in in the kind of location we're talking about throughout the county. So those are certainly opportunities as well, and it certainly encourages an entrepreneurial experience that's pretty evident in our community, experience and expertise, and ambition from people who who choose to live in Montgomery County. So I think those are those are great ideas. I think we just have to create the opportunity so that the right type of job creation occurs here. And some of it may be the traditional office and retail, but I think, on the other hand, we're going to be able to encourage some other aspects as well. So that's where I am.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Lloyd Kaufman.
Yeah, I just want to throw something out there. Why don't we go back to the future and even consider something like a Lexington Market in Baltimore kind of setup, where you have a farmer's market, but that's not just on one day a week outdoors, but more of an indoor market that would provide the community with fresh vegetables and meats and things like that that aren't necessarily going to be out of a giant or out of a Whole Foods. I think it just gives more opportunity for people to get more involved. And it's just a suggestion, just something to throw out there. It's different.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other comments before we go? Neil Harris.
So regarding retail, we already know that there's a ton of retail space, at least along 355. And I think my my impression is that, just as an example, Kentland's retail would have been served better had it been more visible to the main roads going by and its kind of setback. And my concern would be that focusing too much on retail in this spot when it's not visible from the highway going by would be a challenge. I I lean toward focusing more more retail if needed along the 355 corridor and less emphasis on retail in this spot. I mean, personal services-type retail, neighborhood services retail is important, but the general goods and services, assuming there's a market for that going forward, I would keep along 355 rather than moving it in here.
Thanks, Neil. I don't see any other hands. So we're going to go back to, oh, Sharon, go ahead.
Um, so I was in the Macy's last weekend, and it's actually very busy, believe it or not. People still like the retail component of going into a shop and getting their stuff there. There's a whole community of people that live behind the mall that still use it readily. The food court is busy. The bath, the Bath and Body Works had a line out the door to get the $9.99 candle. Literally, they were spaced all the way out the door and around the corner. So there's still people that want to shop and do want retail there locally. I think there should be some small component. I'm not saying exactly what it should be, but I think there should be a place for that. And the only other comment would be about the commercial uses that are already there. There are already buildings that ring the mall. And I don't know if they're if they're full, given what's going on now. But the building that used to be the old Kaiser Building, that was medical. I think it's still, I think it's supposed to be used for medical. I don't think it's full. I don't. So I do think there's there's a place for retail, and there's a place for commercial, but I think they have to be reimagined in a different format because we don't want to do the standard things we've always done.
Thank you, Sharon. I will send it back to staff to continue.
Okay, so if we could go to page 47, please. And I think the group will be glad to know this is the last section. One of the questions we decided to broach was, all right, let's say we got a master plan. What happens after the master plan? So we, with all the various efforts, asked a bunch of questions just to get a sense of where people were coming from. And the majority consensus is redevelopment will occur in phases, that it's not going to happen all at once. Everybody, by and large, wanted to say, you know, traction, something should occur in the next three to five years. And that interim uses should be encouraged, but there was really this this thing that it shouldn't be at the expense of the greater vision. Don't allow something, you know, temporary that in the long run will preclude all these other things we've already talked about. For the most part, people expected, you know, real change should happen in 10 to 15 years. And in many ways, this aligns with a lot of the other developments in the city with their timeline, with completion in 20 to 30 years. And a lot of people encouraged that, you know, this master plan, we really should look at, you know, in 10 years, which is ironic because the land use article says you should review master plans every 10 years. But they were coming through really to see, you know, how how much accomplishment have we made? That's a time for re-review. And another thing that came out of this is if development begins to lag, there was majority consensus that there should be direct investment by the public sector. That doesn't necessarily mean the city. It could also mean the county, the state, or the federal government. But they think, you know, to help, if this is as important as people say, you know, public entities should be willing at a certain point to come to the table with money. Next slide, please. So with that, short and sweet, we recommend including a section that addresses phasing. It's impossible for us to hypothesize every potential phasing scenario. So this is more in a broader discussion about phasing, and that we should establish the need for reasonable flexibility to allow interim uses, phases, and interim designs, as long as they do not interfere with the realization of the ultimate vision. And we do support reviewing the master plan, you know, 10 years after adoption, if this is still in in place. Next slide, please. So with that, really, the question that we have is, you know, do do you, does the council and the planning commission support us exploring, you know, at a macro level, a discussion of phasing and interim uses? And is there support, you know, to write into the master plan that this should be reviewed after 10 years?
Thank you, Rob. So I'll just I'll just start by saying, the recommendations make sense. We should, we should pass it. It should be, it should be flexible, and we should review it after a certain amount of time. That all makes sense in terms of for people here in the public. And I know there's there's about 40, 40 or 50 people that are waiting potentially to speak here. My, I'd love to see, at the at the earliest possible moment, that everything can align, and we can get a project or a combination of of partner partners who are who put together a project, and it's awesome. Right? As soon as that can happen, I want it to happen. But if it's going to take 20 or 30 years to get to awesome, fine, we'll wait. So that's, that's my feeling. I I understand where staff is going with this. They want whoever's coming in to understand that we're not looking at this to just respond to today's market conditions. We want to build something that's going to be amazing and a gem for the city of Gaithersburg in perpetuity. And sometime, if that's going to take longer, then we're willing to wait. So I get it. I see Rob 's hand up. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Mayor. And I agree with you, you know, not necessarily thinking in linear time, but is in terms of awesome, being the trigger. But I also want to, you know, if we're talking, you know, in, you know, five-year, 10-year, 15, 20-year timeframes, when do we expand the conversation to the other properties that wanted to be involved in this but weren't involved in this? You know, such as the the office structures between Odin Hall and Montgomery Village. Neil had mentioned, you know, his, he would rather have certain retail more towards the 355 side. Well, some of those properties as well, in that timeframe, maybe in the redevelopment, talking redevelopment as well. So, you know, if we're talking phasing for this property and tying it to to awesome in the out-years, when do we start bringing those other areas that will be ripe for development within those timeframes into the conversation?
Rob, do you want to address that? Rob Robinson, I should say.
Um, candidly, I'm sort of scared, but I will. I think there's a number of factors at play, one of which is, you know, we'd sort of like sort of resolution coming out of the visioning study to really understand what the policy of the city is going forward. We do have to get rid of, we had said we wanted to get Lake Forest done due to expediency, but we really want to address the required housing element, which again, will establish our housing policy. And then we want to be able to roll right into land use and transportation. And we had said, you know, we had, we had explained to council, when we received direction to move forward with this, we understand the importance of the surrounding area. Once we know what sort of is in place here, that allows us, you know, coupled with, you know, sound policy guidance, you know, to move forward with how we're going to envision the rest of the area, if not targeted other areas of the city. My my dream would be to have, you know, basically, potentially, everything completed within three years.
Thank you both, Robs. We'll go to Mike Sessma.
Okay, I think that's a good, we've already talked about this being a catalyst for what happens in the adjacent and neighboring areas. I just, I think it's important to have some perspective about other development in the city. I've lived here for 25 years. At that point, Kentlands was still only a few years old, and it's taken 25 years to get to the point where it is now. Rio, the same thing, 25 years. Even Crown Farm, we approved in 2007. It's now 2020. It's not complete yet. But I think the similarity between those three projects, development projects, was the this mixed-use framework that was part of the vision. And so the development that's happened in the Kentlands and Lakelands and Crown Farm and Rio were kind of, that framework was set up that long ago, and that's what's important. So everything that's happened between now, between then at approval and now was part of that longer-term vision. So I think phasing is entirely reasonable because we don't know who the players are going to be and who the property owners are going to be. We don't know who's going to own this property, whether it's going to continue to be a collaboration between five owners of the mall and and the parking fields. Don't forget that, that there's still not a single owner here that that we that can be convinced or that has the resources to pull this all together and to initiate a plan. And once that, once there is a plan that the council might have, and planning commission has approved, then I think we'll see the other pieces fall into place along 355 at the fairgrounds, and then the the area in between 355 and the mall. So phasing makes a lot of sense, but I think what's most important is what are we phasing? And that's the overall vision that we're talking about here. And so, you know, we'll have to see how that happens once we come up with an idea and a plan. And once we have single ownership or a collaboration between multiple owners, owners that can advance a plan. So just some, I think it's important how we look at this with some historical perspective. We've, we've shown that we can do these, that these things can succeed within the city with the guidance both from planning staff and with with the elected members of the council and the mayor. So this is just another version of that and the latest one. So that's it.
We'll go to Sharon.
So putting my banker hat on, this is such a large development and tag teaming on what Mike just said, that the a bank or anybody that's going to want a finances project, whoever will ultimately control it, they're going to want to phase it because you're going to want to have cash flow that's going to be able to support the loan to take it to the next phase. So I think it's, it's a kind of a foregone conclusion that this will be a phased project of some kind.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll go to Lori.
Thank you, Mayor. So in looking at the overall recommendations and the entire presentation, you know, we talk about housing for all incomes and the current housing rate. I know the affordable housing, I believe we said 8%. And so I want us to be mindful of this redevelopment project and ensuring that we're not gentrifying this area, we're prioritizing the housing for all income levels, and we're ensuring the accessibility of homeownership and affordability for our housing mix that we come up with. And so as we're thinking about the redevelopment and the sorts of businesses that we're thinking of attracting here, we keep in mind the housing affordability aspects.
Anybody else before we go to the public? Going once, going twice. Okay.
I have two more quick slides, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
They're going to go real fast. Please, let's go to page 50. I just want to let everybody know next step. So following this work session, we will begin actually composing the draft master plan. And our goal is to come back before the council and the commission in spring to present the draft prior to release. So again, if there's any tweaks or edits, you know, that come out, we can do that. We will then begin the formal 60-day comment period. Why we want to have this work session again is we have the ability, you know, to discuss and make edits. Once we begin the 60-day comment period, we cannot make any edits till after the joint public hearing. So again, we're hoping to wrap up the process next summer, beginning with the joint public hearing. We will build into the calendar a potential joint work session post-hearing, depending upon what comes out of that, but it may not be needed. Then we will follow the land use article. And the first step is the planning commission to approve, fingers crossed, the master plan, and then recommend adoption to the council. And then it will come back to the council for adoption. And next slide and final slide, which I'm sure will please everyone, our project page is still up. Please, everybody, visit gaithersburgmd.gov/lakeforest. And this will remain open throughout the entire process. And of course, we're always available to take in comments or to answer any questions with the unique email address lakeforestmp@gaitersburgmd.gov. And thank you for letting me finish off those slides.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I'll ask the tech team to play the instructional video for how how people can testify.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, so I see some hands coming up. I'll just, I'll just tell everybody, we're glad to hear from you. We would like to, everyone needs to keep their comments no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of stuff to tell us, then please submit it in writing, and we will consider it just like oral testimony. When I call on you, you'll When I call on you, uh, you'll state your name and address or neighborhood if you feel, or affiliation, uh, if you feel more comfortable with that and begin your comments. So tech team, if you could bring up Kevin Rogers, please, we'll start with Kevin. Kevin, just state your name, uh, affiliation and go right ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, good. Uh, Kevin Rogers, uh, South Carolina, were the owners of the, uh, central core of the mall, um, which is forty-seven acres of the, uh, one hundred and eight acres. Earlier, I heard a lot of reference to eighty acres. There's actually a hundred and eight acres. So there's about thirty-five percent more space to accommodate the wide range of things that we'll discuss tonight than than, uh, than the eight acres, eighty acres would, would, would lead one's mind to, to believe. As such, there's plenty of, of space, a hundred and eighty acres. It's two very large ponds. The two ponds are on each side of the Russell Avenue, plenty of space to take care of, of all the various sort of uses. And as such, it shouldn't preclude, in my opinion, it shouldn't preclude any particular type of residential, such as townhomes. Detached housing is one thing that's fine. Um, and/or it shouldn't preclude any particular size of retail to accommodate, merely to accommodate the expansive list of uses that were discussed. You know, Councilman Sessma, I appreciate that you mentioned some kind of potential public-private, uh, partnership to sustain, you know, what I might call civic-type symphony, whatever the uses might be. I'd be very interested in hearing, hearing more about what a public-private relationship might, might be to help sustain some of those uses. This, uh, statement in the recommendations about phasing, just to be clear, I, I hope it, I hope what is being conveyed, because we have investors listening to this phone call now, is not a twenty or thirty-year timeframe to, to, to obtain approvals for a project, but rather, if a project happens to take that long to reach full build-out, then a project happens to take that long to reach full build-out. Uh, it, it can be read in this recommendation report. It can be interpreted as if it's a twenty or fifteen or a thirty-year timeframe to seek, you know, full approvals. I will say that in the market-rate housing, uh, category should be pointed out that any market-rate housing that might be constructed on this hundred-and-eight-acre mall site will by very, its very nature be more affordable than anything else because it's in the enterprise zone, which is exempts it from uh, considerable, uh, impact fees that the county would otherwise impose. And lastly, uh, in regards to commercial space, moving any very well-shopped, successful, existing retailer currently in Gaithersburg to this location, if it happens to be an old, beat-up facility, it isn't cannibalistic. It's merely just moving a business to a new location, uh, to serve its customers better and the residents of Gaithersburg.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, and we did receive your email earlier. We will consider it and put it in the record too. Tech team, if we can bring up Spence Limbacher, please. And Spence, we have some sort of alarm going off. Whoever's alarm is going off, please mute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you start over, start the clock over, please?
Okay, can I start?
We, uh, hold on just a second, Spence. Uh, we're having a little technical issue here. Actually, yeah, you can, you can, uh, just go ahead. I'll just time you here. Just state your name and go right ahead.
Yeah, Spence Limbacher. I live at Asbury Methodist Village. I'm the chair of the Gaithersburg Beloved Community. Uh, and we've, uh, a lot of our, number of our members and number of people here at Asbury have, uh, have sat in on some of the focus groups and, and glad to see a lot of the ideas that we projected, we put out, were incorporated in the, in the staff plan. I guess the thing that, that we're most concerned about here is that this, what, whatever goes in, 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 needs to be, uh, financially feasible. A, a developer is not gonna be able to build here if they're not gonna be able to make it feasible financially. And I, you know, I, I think that Kevin just talked about, you know, looking at a ten, fifteen faith year phasing, you know, is a serious problem. Uh, and so the, whoever's gonna finance this or is interested in, uh, in, in investing money in it, uh, they're gonna look seriously at how, uh, financially feasible the entire development is. And I think we just wanna make sure that something good gets built across the street from us. Uh, we're very concerned about the mall continuing to run down. It, uh, other, you know, kinds of things moving in there that are not gonna be healthy or good for the community. So we're, we're interested in how the finances will work on this, and we wanna be, continue to be involved in, uh, in, in helping make this a, a, a really excellent project. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Spence. And we are grateful to everyone at Asbury who participated in this process. It's been very helpful. Tech team, uh, if you could bring up John Morzella, please. And John, once you come up, uh, please unmute yourself, uh, state your name and address or, or the neighborhood and go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm John Morzella, Artistic Director of Best Medicine Rep, a professional theater company in residence at the Lake Forest Mall. And I'm also chairman of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. Last month, we've recommended that you consider a mixed-use performing arts venue combined with a senior and community center. Establishing a unique anchor to a new development is the key to its success. However, relying exclusively upon retail while the rest of the economy moves toward online shopping could set us up for failure. We need something different for those who will live and work in this development, and we need something that can draw people from outside the area to be a destination. According to an article in Global Valuation, a crucial component of successful mixed-use developments is a space for play. As the pandemic winds down, experiential activities will be what gets people out of the house. A performing arts venue could serve as that anchor destination, establishing foot traffic, uniting the community, and providing a space unlike anything else currently in Gaithersburg. We know this combination can work because of the success of the JCC in Rockville, a vibrant space for recreation and the arts for youth, families, and seniors. There are a number of other mixed-use developments in the area that can serve as a model. In Sherrlington Signature Theater is the same building, uh, as the Public Library, is across the street from a supermarket and surrounded by restaurants, shops, and other arts organizations. Tivoli Square in DC was a former movie house and is now the home to Gala Hispanic Theater and the DC Public Charter School. Downtown Silver Springs redevelopment put a high focus on the arts to tremendous success. The AFI Theater, the Fillmore, the Roundhouse Education Center, the Art Gallery in the Black Box Theater were part of this development. And of course Pike and Rose in Rockville, which has a life muse, uh, a live music venue. In a May nineteen twenty-nine panel discussion at the Convention Sports and Entertainment Facilities Conference in San Diego, a panelist, panelists present, predicted an increased focus on venues as economic energies to support increased taxation and revenue. Their research, their research showed that arts and entertainment venues create neighborhoods, which are a selling point for owners and managers. I'd love for the city of Gaithersburg to replace a dying mall with a vibrant neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Um, tech team, if you could bring up, I can't see, this is a, uh, someone who's dialed in over the phone with the, uh, last three digits, three, seven, eight. If you could bring up this person, and then please, uh, unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead. It seems, phone caller, it seems that you are muted. We're gonna give it one more try, give it a couple more seconds, phone caller. Uh, but I, I do not, so, okay. We'll see. If you keep your hand raised, I'll try to call on you again, but we're gonna move on. Next tech team, if you can bring up David Belgard, please. And David, um, just unmute yourself, state your name and address, and go right ahead.
I'm David Belgard. I'm resident of Washington in the woods. First of all, I just wanna say, I, I'm very impressed by, by the great deal of effort that has gone into this and all the various community participation that's been part of this. I think it's really important to, to note that, I apologize, it's an alarm on my computer. I think it's very important to note that, that as came up, this is really a project we're talking about, you know, ten years out from now. And in the end, it's gonna be around for a very long time. So when we're thinking about demographics and such, you know, it's really important to take that kind of long-term view and try to envision what the city will be at that point. And I think it's really important that the core vision focuses not only what will serve the whole city, but also is a very clear focus on what will serve the residents of the immediate surrounding area. I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Spiegel said, uh, talking about willing to go up, that instead of sprawling wide buildings, we minimize the service park lots we build up, uh, that there's an opportunity for event spaces and community spaces perhaps within the buildings themselves. Councilmember Sessma mentioned pocket parks, which is something I've been reading about recently, uh, which can take a space that's got a lot of taller buildings and really make it into something green. I do very much agree with Councilman Sales and Sessma, that I hope the focus remains on mixed-market price residences. It's clearly in the interest of the city to raise the income level, and the easiest way to do that is higher-priced units that are on higher-income families. Uh, in this development, especially due to its location, I hope that the focus is on increasing the income level mainly by providing more jobs with more opportunity for each income level and not primarily by creating housing that draws in higher earners. Uh, to that end, I really loved the, the discussion that was touched on about reimagining what mixed-use means. It has the chance to, to really allow the possibility to provide jobs of all types, including jobs that focus on those within the socioeconomic workforce of the area. And that's something that the city absolutely has some say over, uh, with its zoning. Finally, I'd just like to touch on, on the transit sitter. I, I think it's a great idea to consider how to better integrate it with the site, uh, especially with more people in that location. That might become something very important. Oh, and, and the final thing, um, as John mentioned, uh, and Judd touched on a couple of times, having some sort of hallmark on the site, I think is a great idea. And with a hundred acres, there's the opportunity to do something with that, like the, uh, something like the Strathmore. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Um, and so tech team, we're gonna try one more time with the phone caller. Phone caller, I, I can't see what your name is, but if you could just unmute your phone and, um, state your name and address and go right ahead. I still see it's on mute. Okay, it looks like we're not gonna have much luck there. Um, so is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? If so, please click on the raise hand. Okay, we'll go to Robert Rogers, please, tech team. Robert, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robert Rogers. I live in the Colonnade condominium in Kentlands. My wife and I moved there a year ago, uh, because it was an affordable situation, living in a condominium. We love the walkability, love the lakes and the amenities in this kind of environment. So I was glad to hear about, uh, your, your parallel conversations about the Rio and Crown and Kentlands as being models. Really glad to see that the lakes are becoming a, a key part of what might be developed as amenities. I believe that's very important. And it can be a real feature, even as people drive along Montgomery, uh, Village Way, uh, to enjoy the kind of, uh, natural panorama of those lakes. Uh, I do want to ask a question. I was wondering why there was no discussion about, uh, sustainable design or green building uh, in this kind of project. Granted, this kind of work would need to be done by the developers and builders, but I think the tone of the project, uh, can be set or should be set by the city and the, and the, and the citizens. Uh, this could be a real tremendous model of innovative design, of green building. Uh, it should be covered with trees, landscaping, all sorts of things as a model that the National Institute of Standards across the way in your donut hole in the middle of Gaithersburg could showcase as an innovative example for the whole nation. So I hope there'll be much more emphasis on, uh, green building and sustainable design, uh, as, as the project moves forward. Uh, affordability, uh, of course, is a big deal and
Robert, it, you, uh, looks like you're on mute.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. It must have, uh, self-muted. Sorry. Affordability to me is a big deal, as I mentioned, uh, because we were able to move into the colonated Kentlands. And so hopefully with innovative design and mixed use and a variety of things that this will be achievable. Thank you for all your work on this project, for all the people who've contributed.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Um, I wanna try one more time with the, with the caller, cuz I, I just Googled how to unmute on a phone on Zoom, and you just had to hit star six. Caller, if you hit star six, you can unmute and make your comment.
Yeah, John, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name, address, and go right ahead.
Well, this was inadvertent. This is Kevin Rogers. I apologize. I, when we started this meeting, I, I dialed in from my phone and I logged in on the computer. That was an accident that I
Okay.
registered to speak twice. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Um, is, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak at this time? Not seeing any? Okay, then we will, we will end it here. Um, thank you, tech team. And, um, I will go to John Schlichting and Tom Lonergan and, um, ask if you, if you guys feel guided, if you have any further questions, uh, while we're all here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this has been a really tremendous discussion. We really appreciate the input from all of you. Um, we have a lot to digest and we appreciate all the rich, rich input from the Mayor Council and the Planning Commission, and we will regroup this week and take it from here. But thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Tommy, you all good? You guided?
All good. John said it best.
Okay. All right. Well, then, um, I wanna thank everybody. I, I wanna take this time to, uh, cuz I didn't do it upfront, uh, thank every single person who participated in, in the survey, the public survey. We got tremendous participation in this thing, which is very gratifying because it lets, it, it reinforces that there's a lot of people in this community that care about this community, and that's why Gaithersburg is the greatest city in the world, cuz we keep it that way. So we appreciate it. It's, every bit of it's been helpful. Wanna thank everybody from the, uh, who took place in the focus groups. I mentioned Asbury. I should also shout out to the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber. There was a real estate group. There was a ownership group. There was a, there was a youth group, students. Um, I'm probably missing some, but I just, we got a lot out of all of the feedback, uh, that, and, uh, input that people took the time to put in, and we really appreciate it. And I wanna, uh, I wanna thank staff who did a terrific job in structuring the surveys to make them, uh, uh, compelling and, um, useful for members of the public who don't do this for a living, but who care about their community. You did a great job with that. You did a great job putting together all of the information and translating it into a number of consensus ideas and, uh, directions. So, uh, thank you so much to staff. And with that, I will, I will, uh, remind everyone that we do have a meeting, uh, next Monday, December twenty-first, uh, regular meeting of Mayor Council. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.